End this, so he's gonna do a little back and forth. Bernard Parks is just on his way up.
He's next door in personnel.
So he's in personnel, too. Yeah, yeah.
Oh.
So.
They should be in personnel.
Lord have mercy.
Don't come back with him.
They got two items. He said on the first item someone's one hundred and twenty-four.
Great, okay, okay.
So is this not gonna start till personnel's up?
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta have a third one.
Okay, so should I go back to personnel?
Yeah, and come back with whoever's in. Bernard is in. We're not on the area.
Item number two is a report from the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power and its ordinance, "Go to three members of the LA address to provide relief to others that consecutive non-representatives in the public domain."
We have three members of the Transportation Committee here, so I call the meeting to order. I'm Councilman Rosendale, Chair of the Committee, Wednesday, October 18th, 2009. I'm joined by Richard Alakon and by Paul Corretts, and Bernard Parks is coming down the hall right now, so I expect him in here as well. Colleagues, item number one is a consent item. There's no pro and cons here or anything at this point, so I'd like a motion to move forward with CD 13. Could we have it read for the record what item number one is?
Item number one is a DOT report relative to the proposed expansion of a preferential parking district number forty-six in the Beverly-Kinsley area of LA.
Sub move. Second, Mr. Alakon.
Sure.
Okay, moved unanimously by the committee, and Mr. Parks has voted yes, so it's four, four zero on item number one. Colleagues, what I would like to do is ask Dennis Zane to come on up, and I'd like to do his item so that he can give you some real food for thought on what's going on on this infrastructure bank. And could we please read item number four for the record?
It's two. Item number two is a Rosendale-Alakon motion relative to a request for Move-LA to provide a presentation on the proposed National Infrastructure Development Bank and the benefits to Los Angeles.
Okay. Good afternoon.
Chairman Bill.
Sorry to keep you waiting so long.
Councilmembers, it's a pleasure to be here. My name is Denny Zane. We've all met, I think, at one point or the other over the course of the last thirty years. I'm here representing Move-LA. Move-LA was an organization that played a significant role in instigating Measure R, which the voters approved a year ago in November, a half-cent sales tax for transportation, which will generate thirty-eight, forty billion dollars over the next thirty years to build out a robust transit system for Los Angeles County. It'll, Measure R will finance essentially a doubling of the rail transit in Los Angeles County and expand bus services as well. When you look at that doubling, it really amounts to a restoration of the scale of the system that existed back when the Pacific Red Car operated in Los Angeles County. We will thereby.
Hillary, come on up.
We will thereby have returned to the future when we complete the Measure R projects. Measure R has a thirty-year revenue stream. Projects are scheduled out there. They include five or six light rail systems, a subway on Wilshire, et cetera, and nobody is particularly eager to see a thirty-year program take thirty years to get built. The mayor, in fact, has talked about trying to accelerate this program to be built out within ten years. That is, I think, potentially achievable if we have the right sort of financial resources available to us early. It's not an issue of how long it takes to plan or design or process, it's an issue of, or is it an issue of how long it takes us to construct the system? Were we to have the financial resources available early on, then this system could be built within a decade, subway and all. That should be the goal we would try to achieve. After all, waiting fifty years already to get back to the future, we do not want to wait another thirty, I would think. The item that's before you is one of the opportunities to accelerate money that Measure R provides. Essentially, it's a proposal to create a National Infrastructure Bank, a proposal that the Obama administration supports, a proposal that's been introduced on the House side as HR 2521 by Congresswoman Rosa Delaro of Connecticut. It will be submitted on the Senate side by Senator Chris Dodd, who actually submitted the legislation originally in 2007. If you think about this proposal, it's really a kind of public option on the banking side whose mission is the public interest rather than a broader mission of shareholder interest. The public, I'm sorry, a narrower mission of shareholder interest. The public interest in this case is the development, accelerated development of the infrastructure needs of our nation. Los Angeles County, should this institution be created, may be especially positioned to benefit from it precisely because we have a revenue stream in Measure R and projects that will be, by the time this measure is adopted, will be project-ready. So we could really see a major acceleration by borrowing at lower interest from a National Infrastructure Bank, four, five billion dollars guaranteed by the Measure R revenue stream. Now, we have to create the institution before we can have any sort of borrowing, but to give you a sense of this, the legislation itself says that proposes to put twenty-five billion in federal dollars into the pot for this National Infrastructure Bank to loan. If that money, in fact, is deposited, it will enable the bank to make six-hundred-and-twenty-five billion dollars in loans for infrastructure development. That is close to being equal to the stimulus package that Congress and the President signed into law in the early part of the President's term. However, it only costs the federal government twenty-five billion dollars rather than seven-hundred billion dollars. And the reason for that is, as a lender, the federal government is able to, in effect, leverage its public dollars to a much greater extent than it is as a grantor. So this is a good program for the federal government to get into because what it really does is it stimulates local governments to create or use revenue streams of their own, and the federal government then provides loans to accelerate access to those revenue streams, just as we would here for Measure R. That is something that could be accomplished in community, in county or community or transportation or water agency throughout the country. So it is a, potentially, an entity which could have a dramatic and very significantly positive effect on the infrastructure development needs of our nation. Here in Los Angeles County, simply being able to borrow a mere five billion dollars from the National Infrastructure Bank once it's created would have a dramatic effect on our ability to accelerate all Measure R capital projects. That's why it is here before you today. The packet that you have in front of you in the blue folder from Move-LA, you'll see a document that looks like this. This is a letter that Move-LA has drafted, and these are the sign-ons that we have accumulated thus far from environmental organizations and labor organizations, and the issue is pending before multiple business committee organizations, including the LA Area Chamber and VICA, the West Side Council Chambers and the Miracle Mile Chamber of Commerce, for example, and we're expecting support there as well. The status of the bill is, right now, there is money in the House side of the budget to fund this, two billion dollars at this point. It's really seed money. No money is in the Senate side, but that's by design. What happens then is that the two budgets come together and they get reconciled in a conference report. The key thing for us is to get in support early enough to our key legislators, and they are Senator Feinstein, Senator Boxer, Congressman Waxman, Congresswoman Royball Allard. Senator Feinstein and Congresswoman Royball Allard may be particularly important because they may be members of the Conference Committee that reconciles the budget, since they're both on appropriations in their respective houses. So if we can get that money kept into the budget, even if it's reduced, that will enable the legislation then to be acted on in the next session next year by September tenth, and that will enable the bank then to be up and operating in 2011, which frankly, given our thirty-year time, our revenue stream, that's just around the corner. Okay? So we're urging you to take action, to bring this before the Council, urge the Council to support, and urge your lobbyists to support and communicate to our delegation, the LA County delegation, and in particular, the Congresswomen and Senators that I mentioned, your support for this bill. Meanwhile, Move-LA will be building a business, labor, and environmental coalition, just as we did for Measure R, in support of this bill. We hope that this bill will provide enough of a borrowing opportunity, essentially to meet roughly half the need that we would have if we wanted to accelerate the entirety of the Measure R program into a ten-year timeframe. It's an enormous opportunity. If we were to do that, the amount of money that we would save in construction would be very, very significant and would enable, I think, us to use our money far more for successful implementation of the entire, of the entire program. In fact, it's roughly the equivalent of, is if we borrowed at three percent, the money we would save. So that is what's before you. I'm urging you I'm urging your support. There's a draft, there's a summary of the bill here. I don't have the actual copy of the bill before you, but there's a summary of the bill and a congressional weekly article that occurred last week indicating that this is starting to become a hot discussion item, especially as the President thinks about how to do a second round of stimulus without bumping the deficit.
First, let me just say this about you. There's the photo of you here, you know? Bottom line is, we never would have passed Measure R if it wasn't for your leadership. You played a major role in bringing the right parties together at the right time and keeping them in a kumbaya mode long enough for the people to vote the way they did. It was an extraordinary effort on your part, and I know a lot of people get credit, a lot of people will get credit, continue to get credit, but your leadership behind the scenes was phenomenal. Secondly, I wanted you to come on as an agenda item for my colleagues to hear early on in this November of 2009 that we do have a shot of real money and real infrastructure development in transportation in an accelerated way over the next 10 years if this infrastructure bank gets created. I went to Washington, met with some White House people, and they clearly saw the value of getting the bank up and being able to do just what you suggested it could do. I'm thrilled the mayor took a 10-year mindset. I mean, look, I mean, I'm being selfish here, I'm 64. I can't live another 30, 40 years for this stuff to happen. I want it as quickly as possible.
Right.
And so does everybody else. We're in a tremendous paralysis of gridlock in this region. And the fact that the county voters voted yes, they put their money where their mouth is, it is absolutely the right time for Access-LA, that whole group of community people, business people, and political people, as a unified group. And I know with your leadership, you're going to make that happen again. And our council, I'll let my colleagues speak themselves, obviously, on this, but whatever we can do as a city to assist in energizing the lobbyists and energizing those voters in the House and the Senate, obviously, is in our best interest.
Well, thank you for your kind words. I appreciate that very much. I also want you to know that things don't hinge upon the infrastructure bank. There are other opportunities, other borrowing opportunities, as well as, you know, federal grant opportunities, but there are also our strategies we can pursue in California and locally that can help achieve this. I would say that Measure R was itself the truly heavy lifting. While these are challenges, Measure R was the hard part.
I agree, and we'd like you back in January to talk about other potential funding sources so we can get a full picture of what our challenge could be going forward. Hillary, did you want to add something?
Yes, we just wanted to add, my name is Hillary Norton, and I'm the Executive Director of FAST, Fixing Angelino's Stuck in Traffic, and we just wanted to add our support for Denny and his work at Move-LA for the infrastructure bank, because while we are here looking at the short term, and we're pleased that the council adopted our strategies for the three to five years, by accelerating these projects to a 10-year model, we now can start rightsizing our economic investments and our bus service and others to prepare for these projects being in place in 10 years rather than having them seem more remote. And so we think that this adds to what we're, what we are capable of doing in the FAST term as well, and we're just pleased to be part of the transportation and business and labor community that Denny has assembled to advocate for this very important program.
This is sort of a slam dunk, but there's no resolution before us. Shouldn't we have a resolution and--
There's actually a resolution pending in Information Technology and Government Affairs Committee.
So--
So this was for the presentation, and then we will talk to the committee about scheduling that resolution and have those both in council.
Okay, is there anybody to just fast-track it and get it to council?
We'll talk to the chair of the committee and see.
I agree with you. That would be exactly the right thing to do.
Okay.
Bernard. Let me just ask, I missed something early on. You say they set up the bank, the government puts a couple billion dollars into it. How do you leverage that to where we're talking now, tens of millions of dollars to come out of it?
The figure that the legislation itself uses is $25 billion. That would give it lending authority for $625 billion.
Are you bonding?
Well, it's above my pay grade to talk like I'm, like I know how bankers work, but it clear, it has something to do with the fact that it's just, when the money is secured by other revenue streams, essentially it replenishes itself and enables continuous additional lending.
So you go out, what, to the private industry and they contribute as well as government?
That is a key part of, I think, the, of the strategy for this, for this, for this bank, is to not only be a lender, a public lender, but also be a public lender that mobilizes private lenders.
Okay, and then, what, if somebody, a group comes forward, like City of LA, and say, "We want to accelerate, we need $10 billion," that, that comes out of that bank and the city or the MTA or whatever moves forward to build the project?
Yeah, the bank itself will have to create its own application process and review process and priorities. It'll no doubt set up strategies to ensure that there's geographic equity and, and projects that are prioritized in certain criteria, including, I hope, greenhouse gas reduction strategies, which would benefit us, because these are all electric projects we're working on out here. So they would create their own criteria and application process and then, and the, and the procedures for application and review. The legislation itself doesn't dictate those things, the legislation creates the institutions. And, you know, I think getting people who are more familiar with the operations of banks in here to talk about how it is that $25 billion turns, it's the same way in a private bank, you know, depositors, you know, they have to have 10%, I think, of their, of their loan portfolio on, on, available in the bank at any one time in deposits. They, you know, so they're leveraging their money by lending it out and then, and then getting the return on those loans and then relending that money. So that's the kind of recycling process that a bank goes through.
But the factor that you're not including is time. You get, you get 700 or 650 million, but it's over a period of time.
That's right.
And I, what is that period of time?
Well, I think the $25 billion is a five-year, a $5 billion per year, five-year proposed allocation, so I think the loan, the lending cycle is that five-year period. But the loan over, the loans themselves will have various, various, you know, maturity dates, 15 or 30 years.
I don't know how you, you're right, we do need to get bankers in here. I don't, I'm--
It's not my expertise.
I appreciate that.
I organize campaigns, not loans.
No, but the way it works is sort of like a revolving loan fund.
That's right.
And, but in order to be able to reloan, you've got to have the payments being made, so it's going to take longer than five years.
Yeah, I think part of what happens is when you've got a good criteria, part of what happens is there's a, there's a supposition about the, about the payback schedule. In other words, there's confidence that it'll be repaid.
Well, but confidence is in cash. You can't build a building without cash. I mean, it's the same concern that Mr. Parks was raising, you know, we're not going to get $700 billion in projects in the five years. It's going to take longer.
Well, my understanding is that the lending capability, that they are, that they will be authorized to make loans of that amount, the money won't itself be expended in that timeframe.
Okay, so if the project is a 10-year project--
Right.
--then they allocate the loan over 10 years?
That's, yes, they don't give you cash upfront.
Okay, but--
They don't get all $5 billion right away.
Yeah, but the reason, the reason I would be concerned about that formula is because that's exactly what we should be doing with our housing trust fund, with, with other funds that we accumulate. It's what I intend to do with the, the little foreclosure prevention program that we've created with a million bucks. We hope to get much more in terms of benefit, but it takes time to get the, to get the payments back.
I'll either have to get briefed more thoroughly about a banker, about how their processes work, or defer, when these questions are asked in the future, of me. My mission and expertise is organizing coalitions, not banks.
Good.
But it's a good point, and when we come back, we'd like to get more understanding of that as time goes on. Paul?
Yeah, I don't have too much to add, other than how excited I am that this will actually happen in my lifetime instead of my daughter's lifetime. The only question I have, I don't know if this is too bank-wonky a question or not, the process to create this bank and apply and all the steps, when do we actually anticipate that we'll start seeing money?
Well, assuming it is approved in 2010, then the objective of the administration is to see the bank operating in 2011. So when does money actually start to be able to go out the door? I would guess 2012. Now, in, you know, that's about, that's a good timeframe for us, given the point we are in the planning of several projects.
Okay, just so, for the record, you know, on October 28th, I put in a resolution to support HR 2521, the National Infrastructure Development Bank Act of 2009, that would facilitate efficient investments and financing of infrastructure projects and new job creation through the establishment of the National Infrastructure Development Bank. This resolution is pending in the Information Technology and Government Affairs Committee. So what we've done here, colleagues, as a committee, is take an affirmative position that we believe in this, and obviously, we want those committees to expedite it so that our city takes a firm position and creates the lobbying support system in Washington that can even flow into the spring when Access-LA does their annual trip with 400, 500 people. This could be the mantra of their major moment back in DC in the spring, which is, let's pass this federal legislation in the Senate and the House for the Infrastructure Bank as one of the options of creating the funding to accelerate these programs.
You should know also, that's very good, and you should know also that there is a California institution that simply, but it simply has never been funded sufficiently to do major infrastructure projects. But for the purposes of these questions that you had before, I would suggest inviting Stan Hazelworth, who's the executive director, Hazel Roth, who's the executive director of the California Infrastructure Development Bank, to come and discuss with you exactly how it is this program would, in practice, work.
Very good, and we will do that, invite him in January, and we'd like you to be in the audience or interact with him as well.
I think Stan Hazelroth.
Anybody else want to say anything, colleagues? So my motion is to move forward with this. Do I have approval, colleagues?
What are we moving forward?
What you're moving forward is our energy to this resolution that I just mentioned that we put in to support legislation, HR 2521, which would create--
Well, we have, there is a resolution already moving--
Yeah, the only thing you have pending now is the motion, so if you approve the motion, since you've had the presentation, we'll get them both to council at the same time and work with.
Good, great, okay. Sub move?
So we're supporting HR 2521.
Correct.
Well, the motion is just about a presentation.
The resolution is on the legislation.
So what is the action?
Say it again, Maria.
The motion is before you, so if we approve the motion, you've had the presentation, and then when the resolution comes out of Government Affairs Committee, we'll have them both in council together.
But the chair is suggesting that we take a position to support the legislation.
That's not before you.
No, no, but, but this gives, gives, gives our support to the concept of doing it. So that's all we can do, it's in another committee, but we wanted to hear this presentation so we could appreciate--
So we theoretically support it.
We theoretically support it, and we like the notion--
In concert.
--of the infrastructure bank. It'll be something.
You're going to waive this in our committee, right? It's not going to come to our committee.
What committee?
She's going to like it.
Yeah, right, it's not going to come to our committee, because we've done this resolution to support. Okay. My method to my madness--
Just do the resolution next time.
I would have if it wasn't in the other committee.
Oh.
Okay, that wasn't my committee. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Bye. All right, item number three.
Item number three is the DOT-CLA CAO report in response to a Groo Wizar motion relative to the Measure R Local Return Funds, Proposed Budget Guidelines and Related Matters. You have before you the CLA CAO, excuse me, report on Measure R, and this was developed based on the three reports you've received from the Department of Transportation over the last few months, specifically direction that we received on October 14th to come back with more analysis in terms of the preferred scenario the DOT had put together. So I'm going to turn it over to the CAO to talk about the specific Prop C, Prop A deficits, and then we can talk about some of the policy issues.
With that in mind, I do have seven cards here. Would it be the preference to hear the staff report and then respond or, or not? Sounds like it makes sense, right? To hear that? Okay, so go for it.
All right, Angela Broom, CAO. Over the past month, our office and the CLA have worked with DOT. A lot of our meetings have been focusing on the projected deficit in Proposition C. The largest component of the Prop C deficit is the Transportation Grant Fund Work Program, and this work program is a collection of grant-funded projects that have been awarded to the city through various grant programs, such as the Metro Call for Projects, Safe House to Schools, and Safety Lo. During our meetings, DOT was able to provide their estimated cash flows required for work on these projects over the next five years, beginning with this fiscal year. The attached spreadsheet to our report, or the giant spreadsheet that you received earlier today, is a list of the projects and their reported required cash flow estimates. So we've been working off of this project list, and we've made some significant changes to the Prop C needs for this fiscal year. We'd like to continue working on that, just to make sure our numbers are fully refined in our final report. We've also been looking at sales tax revenue. As you know, sales tax is the funding stream for Measure R, for Prop C, and for Prop A. And as you also know, and as recently reported in our second FSR, sales tax revenue is down. Right now, we're concerned that the sales tax revenue may decline even further, and we'd like to get some additional data in December to help determine if further adjustments are warranted. Another recent development is the Employee Retirement Incentive Program, or E-RIP. DOT alone has had 123 applicants. We'd like to work with the department and other departments that support transportation grant fund projects to see what these impacts are from E-RIP. We'd like to know and assess their capacity to complete these projects. DOT will also be coming forward with their findings from their recent Transit Line-by-Line Study and with recommendations to mitigate the shortfall in Prop A. So we'd like some, some time to see what, what these recommendations are and how they will mesh with the final Measure R proposed budget.
I understand you want 60 days, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Public comment? Have some public comment on this? Tom Johnson, Sonya Sendback, Dennis Hindman, Yogi Helen, after that.
We can get it so you can read the spreadsheet, yeah.
It would have to be like this.
Come on up, folks. Why don't you just get in the last chair so I can get the folks to sit.
Mr. Chair, one minute or two.
It depends, I don't know. They've been here a long--
And then, and people?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Been waiting for hours. Much respect.
Hold on.
Great, we'll take a fifth person up, too, so we can just keep moving along. Did I, did I say Yogi? Okay, how about Hillary? Did you want to come back up? Hillary, come on up. Okay, then we got, after that, Stephen Box and Steve Iterno, I think. Okay, you're up, sir.
Well, I, I--
Your name for the record?
Oh, my name is Dennis Hindman, and I want to, I want to talk just about transportation. In terms of bicycles and pedestrians, it's supposed to be 10% of the budget, it's something that's very neglected, and also, I think there's a misunderstanding about the big projects are very important, and yet you can do, you can, you can move a lot of people with a lot less money with buses. Let's, let's use some numbers that are already existing. The Gold Line, opening day was 75,000. The opening day for the Orange Line was 83,000. Now, that's a busway. The Subway does about 130,000 passengers a day. On Wilshire Boulevard, it does about 100,000 without a dedicated bus line. Okay, now, the problem, the problem with all of the big budget, all of the big projects is how you get people to and from the mass transits. I think the thinking is that you're going to use cars. A lot of people are going to get out of their cars, they're going to bring their $25,000 car to the parking lot and then have another car at the other end of it, to get where they want to go. If it's, if it's, in terms of small distance, a bicycle is a very strong competitor with a car. Three miles or less, a bicycle is, should be emphasized much more strongly in the city for all of the major hubs, for the rail lines, the Orange Line, also the pedestrians for even shorter distance, up to a half a mile. But it looks like in terms of the budget, this is going to be de-emphasized. And in terms of the Subway, the Subway, you just discussed-- And in terms of the subway, the subway, you just discussed, it could take 10 years if you speed it up, or 30 years. What's gonna happen in the meantime? I mean, it could be, what's gonna happen on Wilshire Boulevard with the dedicated bus line, it's gonna be, I think, $22 million to have at least a partially dedicated line, and it's going to be moving, obviously, from 100,000 passengers a day to much higher levels than that. And you can also do that on other major streets heading toward downtown.
Appreciate what you say, good points.
All right.
All of it. Sir.
Hi, my name is Tom Johnson. I distributed, you each have a letter that I'm about to read you. This is from the Green LA Transportation Work Group. Dear Los Angeles City Transportation Committee, as members of the Green LA Transportation Working Group, working towards a greener transportation system for Los Angeles, we urge you to approve the 10% set aside for bikes and pedestrians in the Measure R local return draft. With the current economic crisis and climate change concerns, now is the time to fund bike and pedestrian projects, which are low costs and effective solutions to our challenges. Approving this set aside will confirm LA City is dedicated to improving air quality, public transportation, and mobility. Thank you for your attention to this important matter. And these are all representatives from American Lug Association in California, Ryan Snyder Associates, Los Angeles Walks, Bus Riders Union, Los Angeles Taxi Workers Alliance, the Transit Coalition, Move LA, Healthier Solutions Incorporated, California Public Interest Research Group, Los Angeles Bicycle Coalition, Coalition for Clean Air, Environment Now, and Latino Urban Forum. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate your letter as well, so I'm ahead of time. Please.
Hi. My name is Sonya Sendak, and I'm here as a representative from the Los Angeles County Bicycle Coalition, and I just want to also reiterate my support for 10% for bicycles and pedestrians. After hearing the report by the previous woman, obviously, seems like there might be some deficits, and sometimes, when there's a deficit, we tend to cut out little things that we think might help even everything out, but I want to remind the council that it takes a lot less money to do a lot more things for pedestrians and bicycles. And, you know, dedicating a million or two or three to bike and ped projects can fulfill so many more projects, and, you know, a million to the light rail is really a drop in the bucket, so just keep that in mind.
Good, thank you very much for your comments. Sir.
Hello, my name is Yogi Henlund. I've used a combination of bike and a public transit bus to get here today from Venice, California. I'm on the planning board of the Los Angeles County Bicycle Coalition, and a PhD student at UCLA in public planning. While obviously, we're in financial straits all across the board, dollar per dollar, money spent towards improving bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure will help magnify any other spending in other aspects of public transportation that we, in this holistic approach, we need to start following through and putting our money where our mouth is, as the city of LA, in terms of bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that very much. Hillary?
Hi, my name is Hillary Norton from FAST, and I'm here to talk about the fact that we can be supporting bike and pedestrian, and also strategic street resurfacing and traffic demand management. I think that those are all important for local return. We can use this to make a statement. They don't, they aren't mutually exclusive. In fact, as Councilmember Alarcon, when he resurfaced so many of the streets, they made them bicycle safe, and we need to encourage more cycling in the city, because it saves so much in terms of our air quality. There are other cities, like Portland, where we can be investing, 8% of Portland's commuters go by bike. If we could do that in Los Angeles, where we have so much better weather, we could be doing so much more for our city. And if we could just start investing in strategic street resurfacing, so that bikes, buses, and cars could share the road, this would make it a wonderful statement for what we want to invest in now, until we can start getting these heavy rail projects to happen. So, we're just here to ask for your support on all of those efforts. Thank you very much, council members.
Appreciate that. Stephen Box, Steve Iteno, I think?
My name's Steve Iteno, I'm just a...
And then, wait a minute. Tom and Martinez, is that right? Okay, so we got Stephen Box coming up, and also, Tomon. Great, okay, you're up. Go for it.
My name is Steve Iteno, I'm just a citizen. I don't represent anybody. I'm an intermodal user. I cycle, I take mass transit in conjunction with bicycles, and I own a car, and I use it all the time. And I feel like cyclists are an underserved, unrecognized minority in this metropolitan region of the automobile. The amount of funds than, infrastructure, there is not a single charo in this city. Charos are, exist everywhere else in this country. We can't even get one. And there's people in the transportation arena have made statements, things like, oh, well, the paint's too slippery. I mean, there's a pervasive kind of sentiment, I don't think it's funny, but there's a pervasive kind of sentiment that I feel from the city, that we're not, that cycling is not a serious solution. Is that my time?
Yeah, well, I happen to agree with you, with your passion, and I agree with you that we should be putting 10% of our funds into this, and we should make safe routes quickly, and then go into other phases of getting bicycling as part of our culture and way of life.
Right, I think what I was asking for is, please, the 10% is nothing.
Yeah.
Relative to what the needs are, and that we, there are a lot more of us now than ever. I don't think there's anybody here that's a professional.
Yeah.
You know, we're all volunteers. We come down here because we care.
Because you care. Well, thank you for coming down, and for what you just said.
Thank you.
Either one.
Go ahead. My comment is, oh, Stephen Box, I live in Hollywood, Bike Riders Collective. My concern is that Plan C, the preferred proposed budget, the one with the council, office discretionary funds, anticipates $181 million, and of that, we're told that there's a 10% set aside for bikes and peds, but the LA DOT's math calculates that as $10.8 million. $10.8 is not 10% of 181 million. It's 10% of the net, after you take out the 73.4, which is referred to as the 3% set aside. All of which would be great, except we're calculating other numbers on a base of gross, while for the cyclist, it's on a base of net. This is misleading math. We're not getting 10%. I would also suggest that 10%, this $10.8 million, split in half between bikes and peds, is enough, based on the track record of the LA DOT, to provide 350 yards of bike path per year, 1,400 yards of bike lane per year for the next five years. It's not even worth the paper that we're debating here. But this is misleading math.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Can we get a comment from the department on that?
Well, can I also comment that we agree that that was taken as net, not gross? And so, when we, CLA, CAO, please, the light, I'm sorry.
We would agree that, with the comment just being made, that that number was taken off the net, not the gross. It should be taken off the gross, that's what the committee directed us to do. So when the CLA CAO report back, there's going to be a new table, similar to what was in the department's report on a scenario, that will show you the options. We will put in a 10% of the gross number and see what the implications are of that. There may or may not be Measure R money left over. We have to, as the CAO outlined, we have to find out what the deficit is for Prop C, so, just wanted to clarify.
Thank you for that clarification, too, and thank you for what you...
And I would also move that we divided equally between peds and bikes.
What, the 10%?
Yeah, there'd be 5% for bikes and 5% for peds.
And a pet is a motorcycle?
Yeah.
Oh.
Pedestrian. It's late.
I mean, I was going into these crazy new technologies. Well, I think pedestrians should always have the most rights, I mean, we're the people walking around. But 5% to bicycles and 5% to people? In our initial paperwork on this, has that been pretty well understood?
That was the spirit of the conversation that we had, yeah.
That's specified in the CLA's report, that it's 5 and 5, but it's actually 6% split two ways, which is 3 and 3, unless you make an adjustment.
But it's combined in the report, and it really needs to, we want to be clear, it's...
Should we make, do you want to make a motion on that right now, so that we...
I move...
All right, so done, okay?
We don't, we don't need the paperwork.
We'll make it clear.
So then, are you going gross in the future?
Yes.
So it'll be $18.1 million, not $10.8? Excellent, thank you.
That will be the proposal. I'm not committed, I mean, that's the proposal.
It has to go through the committee and the council and all of that, but it made sense. You're up.
Ramon Martinez, bike activist at large. Really great to hear that that is actually the intention of the different departments working, and glad to hear that another 8 million will be added to that. And just want to really stress that the committee really take a stand and make sure that that is, that that money is just not, you know, kind of left over, and that we really put priority on this plan. You know, we're in the midst of a bike plan that's being put forward in front of everybody, and there's been a lot of really, you know, kind of wacky numbers, and almost shady dealings, so we're really hoping that, you know, this number won't just get lost in the fold, and that we can actually, you know, all agree and move forward on it. And I just want to say that, you know, around the country, we're seeing cities like New York, San Francisco, Chicago, Seattle, Portland, it's not just smaller cities, it's now big cities, that are really taking this stuff seriously, and are really having huge, huge projects go through with big, big benefits. And so, we're talking 30-year timelines, but in five, 10 years, we're gonna see, you know, New York, Chicago, San Francisco, having huge things, and Los Angeles has to be there with them. So, I know you guys are gonna do the right thing, thanks a lot.
Appreciate your comments, and you're up.
Yeah, the only thing I would add for consideration is that I'd like to include within the bicycle and pedestrian set aside the option to include bicycle and pedestrian transportation demand management, and that bicycle and pedestrian TDMs should be able to apply for funding to create, promote, and staff their programs.
How does that sound?
Sure, we'll definitely incorporate that in our proposal.
Wait, 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 I don't know what the implications of that are.
You're expanding the pot, so that it's bicycles, pedestrian projects, and then TDM projects, so your percentage goes down.
Oh, this is, the pieces of TDM projects that relate specifically to bicycle and pedestrian.
Then we would call, I don't see why we would need to add TDM then. If it's bicycle or pedestrian, it's already included.
Yeah, as long as that's clear, because there are some programs that are TDM, include bicycle, pedestrian, other elements, I'd want to be able to seek funding for the bicycle and pedestrian piece of that, and I'm not sure if it's clear without putting that in there.
I'm not sure I quite understand.
It's certainly not precluded. I mean, although it's not, there's not a designated figure, I mean, it's...
If we think it's not precluded, then if anyone says otherwise at a later point, I'll come back to you guys and say, hey, we all had that understanding.
Are you saying that you want TDM projects that are not bicycle or pedestrian in there?
No, the...
Okay.
Projects that go beyond it, but include the bicycle and pedestrian elements, I'd want to be able to fund the piece that involves bicycle and pedestrian.
I was under the impression that TDM projects are inclusive of all strategies. If they're done holistically, they should be. So, where you separate the dollars for one, it gets very, so I would like to think that the TDM money comes out of the other 90%.
Well, Ken Hasting, LA DOT. I just wanted to clarify on the TDM, we had this discussion last time, at least as I walked away from the conversation, what I understood, there's different types of TDM. There's bicycle, pedestrian, a related TDM, then there's also carpooling, ride sharing, and more of the automotive TDM. When I walked away from what I, the guidance I received, it was because we are going to still continue to push for bike and ped, the bike and ped category would be inclusive of transportation demand management strategies that relate to bike and ped. So in other words, what you're asking for is what we interpreted as part of that category.
So what I'm saying is, let me give you a real life example. In my district, there's a Century City Transportation Demand Management Program. I don't know the figures off the top of my head, but let's say, the program was $4 million, and the pedestrian bike piece of it was 50,000. Is there anything that would stop us in seeking funding for the 50,000 piece of it that relates to bicycle and pedestrian from this pool?
Provided that we're able to distinguish that 50,000 from the rest of the TDM strategies that relate to automotive. I believe, and the CAO can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that would be eligible.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. Anybody else? Bernard? Say it again. Okay. I just want to make sure we're on the record and say that 10% set aside for bike and pedestrian projects. The city is way behind on bike and ped improvements, and we need to take this opportunity now to move our priorities in that direction. Everybody seems to be comfortable, we're at that 10%, and we're gonna stay there and move forward.
We're not making it a, we're gonna get a report back.
We need a report back in 60 days. And then also, the local match, and I know you're working on this, too, that if we front-load these funds, we will be prepared should these transit projects come in line earlier than anticipated, and then, we don't want to miss the boat if there's a sudden influx of cash that allows us to build all transit projects sooner. So, I mean, that's understood in where we're taking it. And I know you're gonna talk more when we come back in 60 days about the shortfalls, if there are any of Prop A and C. Okay, all right.
So, let me just say, when we mentioned this in one of the earlier meetings, as we go forward, I would hope that we not use Measure R, the same as we've used Prop A and C. Because if we build in money usage for a multi-year projects like people, we'll look up one day and Measure R will be $20 million to the deficit. It just seems like it gives us a chance, with the local return money, to actually get projects on the ground, get them done, it's for that year, and then move on to the next year, but not put us in a situation to where we're now funding some hole in Prop C or A, and the money just gets evaporated.
Right, yeah. Our report back will include a discussion on the uses of Measure R as a policy for ongoing expenses versus one-time capital, including projects.
Thank you very much, and we're approving your report with your coming back in 60 days with fleshing it all out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, what we're doing is approve the report, the recommendations that they've suggested right now.
If you approve the recommendations, it will move on to Budget and Finance, then council. If you want to continue it in committee, we'll report back in 60 days.
Yeah, because we don't want to see it in Budget and Finance till it gets...
Until you have the final report.
Right on.
So we'll continue it.
Continue it.
For 60 days, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to item four. Do you want to read?
Sorry. Item number four is Rosenthal's motion and the city attorney to report relative to creating a provision for council members to designate discreet and distinct areas of their council districts where people would be allowed to park and sleep overnight.
Good afternoon, council members. Keith Pritzker, Deputy City Attorney. We've had a task force that has met to discuss how this motion might be implemented, and I'd like to make some legal suggestions here. Now, we've reviewed what was part of Councilman Rosenthal's initial motion, the legislation that's been adopted in Eugene, Oregon, and Santa Barbara, California. Now, in light of those examples, the city may adopt a similar ordinance allowing individuals to sleep in their vehicles in pre-designated areas. The legal considerations at issue would involve property rights in the neighborhoods where the pre-designated parking lots would be located, and zoning issues related to the appropriate use of such lots. At this time, our office is recommending that, or our task force is recommending, that we go forward with just a discussion of what is done on private property and not on public property. Anyway, as such, the ordinance would be considered by the city's, by the city council's Planning and Land Use Management Committee, that is, assuming that the council decides to move forward with this idea, and with the city planning department. Now, in an attempt to protect neighborhoods and the property rights of its residents, it's recommended that the city adopt a conditional use permit language that would allow for the permitting of such lots as sites for vehicle dwellers. The zoning administrator, or the area planning commission, could review applications to permit a certain parking lot for vehicle dwelling use, and determine its compatibility with this use. The zoning administrator would ascertain whether the parking lot meets all of the requirements of the municipal code for lighting, landscaping, filtration, water surface runoff, walls blocking views, and also determine if the proposed use would detrimentally affect nearby residential or commercially zoned communities. Similar to the Santa Barbara and Eugene examples, the city may also develop and release... Similar to the Santa Barbara and Eugene examples, the city may also develop and release a request for proposals for nonprofit social service agencies to submit proposals to operate a vehicle to housing transition program. The service, the service provider would recruit vehicle dwellers to participate in the program, provide services to those participants, and supervise the parking sites to assure that they are operated in a safe and sanitary manner. The service provider could be delegated as the first responder when the city becomes aware of someone living in a vehicle in, on a city street. The vehicle dweller could be notified that living in a vehicle is prohibited by city ordinance and, and at the same time be offered overnight accommodations on a permitted parking lot. It's further recommended that the city ensure that all service providers meet certain guidelines, similar again to Eugene and Santa Barbara. Service provider models that would include requirements related to keeping the site safe, clean, and healthy while simultaneously maintaining the integrity of the surrounding neighborhood. Such guidelines might include toilet facilities on-site and access to a shower for vehicle dwellers using parking sites, sanitary disposal of human waste and trash, emergency telephone number prominently displayed on-site, and a prohibition of drugs, alcohol, overnight visitors, pets, or other similar uses that could create a problem for the neighborhood. Now, in conclusion, in, in light of those other cities ordinances, the city of Los Angeles could adopt something similar to provide overnight parking for vehicle dwellers that may be legally undertaken and council members may designate discreet areas within their districts where people would be allowed to park and sleep overnight. However, it's recommended that the land use, zoning, and property rights-related legal implications that I've outlined, as well as the health and safety issues, are considered and addressed within any plan to allow for overnight vehicle dwelling.
Question, you keep saying lots.
Yes.
The motion doesn't mention lots, which of course also created potentially the opportunity for certain streets that could be used that, you know, might not, you know, impact anybody but a business that is no, you know, is closed down at night if it was for that. Do you see any of that or are you just saying lots?
Well, I'm talking about private property as opposed to public property.
Why are you saying just private property rather than public property?
Well, when, if we start talking about public property and designating areas on public streets or city-owned property, which is off-street, it creates a whole variety of, of additional issues that at least staff felt at this time were, were best not gone into, that, that we should start with the sort of example that's already been trailblazed by Eugene and Santa Barbara in conjunction with local churches that would allow their parking lots to be used for this purpose.
So, that's the Eugene and Santa Barbara model?
Yes.
So, it is in the motion?
What happened with Laguna?
Well, what hap, what happened, Laguna was sued by the ACLU because they were rousting people and arresting people who were living in their vehicles on the street. And the way that Laguna Beach recently settled with the ACLU was to provide off-street locations where people could sleep in their vehicles and provide, I believe, the type of services that are, are being provided in Eugene and Santa Barbara.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it would be wonderful if we could do something similar here in LA. But that's, that, you know, is a, not an official position of my office.
No, I understand, I understand. But, but what I find interesting is what Richard is saying modeled after the Santa Barbara and Eugene initiatives, creating a provision for council members to designate discreet and distinct areas in their council districts, that only included private lots in those two locations?
Well, that's what we're talking, we.
I mean, I'm saying that, for instance, part of my thinking was some, some city-owned property, city-owned lots or city-owned facilities locating.
Well, you know, we, we could go forward, there's, there's no reason why this committee couldn't move this forward to the full city council and, and include in the discussion the use of city lots in addition to private locations.
I was just going to say, for, for me and the eighth district, even though we are the second-leading area of homeless people, this would not fly. We spend most of our time on community concerns about people who are vending, sleeping, finding their way into neighborhoods, sleeping in doorways, with all kinds of suggestions on how to get them out of the neighborhood but not provide a vehicle to expand it, even to the point where we've had circumstances where.
Mike.
People were living in their motor homes and they would converge on residential property and plug in at night and their neighbors would go absolutely crazy. I mean, so for us, it would not, you know, be something that we would be encouraging or being able to support because our, my constituency is, would be up in arms in the fact of saying that you allowed anyone to sleep in an area. In fact, it's kind of inconsistent with a couple of things for us is we make almost all of our parks have a time limit where we close them down. We also are in very vigilant in certain areas with oversized vehicles to make sure people aren't hampered by that. We, we keep the city attorney's office, your unit, overwhelmed with these kinds of, of issues as it relates to providing service in the community and taking eyesores out of the community. So, those, that would be something that would be probably, we'll say intolerable, but close to it from, from most of the community I represent.
Well, I don't, I don't want to take a position as the city's lawyer here, but I, what I did want to do is go over the parameters by which, if a majority of the council felt that this was something they wanted to pursue, the way in which we could do it. And, and I wanted to emphasize especially the property rights-related issues and, and the fact that if you're going to allow this areas for, for people who are in vehicles and are homeless to congregate, that we want to do it in a way that would provide social services, hopefully help them to transition to living in some other manner. And, and we might do it by including the planning department and coming up with a procedure similar to those other cities that I mentioned. And, you know, it's really something, obviously a policy decision for the council to decide.
But your, your proposal is not a city-wide approach. You're saying that each council district could make up their mind if they want, wanted to designate and then all of these other pieces come together from zoning and those types of things.
Well.
That was the motion.
The motion, the motion was.
The option of each council member to either opt in or opt out of the idea of doing this, which doesn't mean they have to do it, but it does give a, a strategy of dealing with people who live in cars and campers, other than just criminalizing them, which is a frustrating reality for the police on one level. And then it's also difficult for these people, where can they sleep? And I have seen anecdotally, Mr. Alcon, you've probably have heard this too, there was a lady that was told to get out of her car and sleep on the sidewalk, it's against the law for her to sleep in her car. So, she got out and went on the sidewalk. And to me, that was like total insanity, you know? But that is the law. That was one of the motivating factors I had. I'd like to decriminalize it in locations that can be agreed upon. The location could be a public street, it could be a city facility, it could be a police station's back park, or it could be a lot of locations that could be government or, or public street. Also, obviously, it could be locations where there's a private sector appreciation, a church that might want to take some leadership on it, or, or a, a business that, that sees a, a social giveback and at night let their parking lot be used. But, but to find, as I'm sure Mr. Parks was alluding to, it's almost impossible to find a place to begin with because nobody wants these folks in their backyard. So, I'm limited in my options if your interpretation i- is just private locations.
I think part of the difficulty is that you're dealing with 15 different council members and every one of them has a different problem.
Yeah.
In, in my experience, these problems are best, or these kinds of programs are best dealt with by designing pilot projects.
Yeah.
Without having the, for example, if, if we did a citywide policy and 10 of the council members decide to do this, it might present a, a particular problem for the police department and they would have to come up with all kinds of strategies. Whereas if we just had one pilot project to begin the process, we could learn a lot from that project and, and move forward from there. But, so I, I might suggest that the maker of the motion identify a site in his district where he thinks he might be able to manage this idea and then come back and report on how it goes.
Well, what I would, if you want to go in that direction, is I wouldn't mind my district, as a district, having the opportunity to decriminalize it in set locations, but, but do that as part of where I want to go with this thing. And if others want to see it as a pilot and maybe do something like that, that's fine with me. I just want to give everybody the option of either focusing on it or not focusing on it. But it is a citywide law. Can we do that? Separate out the 11th district?
You're more likely to get support for the idea as a citywide measure if you have a demonstrated project because it's going to, there's just too many different ways this project.
I understand what you're saying. A demonstrated project, though, from my end is I got to be able to tell the person, it's not against the law for you to sleep in X place. And right now, it is against the law for them to sleep in X place.
Yeah, but I think the, the real dilemma is going to be if you create X place and then you add on to that the zoning issue and the maintenance issue and the cleanup issue and the security issue and then the liability issue and then you're going to provide them with resources that help them move from that place to another, you've just created a shelter without a roof.
But, but I think the way that, it could be done by ordinance. You could design a pilot project for a specific council district by ordinance.
That could be done. But I think, I think you need to move this back to full council to decide whether you want to do it as a pilot project or whether you want to do it in, in some larger method.
I certainly don't want to speak for my colleagues and their energy once again, but I want to address a problem in my district where we have a substantial amount of people in cars and campers and I would like to get them off of certain locations into other locations. For me to be able to do that, I got to decriminalize it in the context of my district at least. And I'm more than happy to accept it at that level and consider my district a pilot project for trying to find solutions. Gives us time to work it out, you know? But I want to be able to, within that motion, be clear that government facilities, parking lots, government structured areas are part of the process because that might be where I start is, is in a place that I got that opportunity.
Well, we, we could certainly include that as part of the discussion and then, and then we'll report back to you as to the challenges that that, you know, raises in, in using public facilities.
Yeah, okay. But I'd like that as part of going forward with the motion, A, allows my district, if colleagues want to go for it.
Okay, but so far, we, you know, we, what we need is, is this committee to make a recommendation back to full council and full council to vote to take one direction or another and then instruct us as city staff.
Yeah.
To, to develop a report and, and, and a draft ordinance.
Yeah, yeah. So, one direction or another. My direction is, and if my colleagues will buy into it, then it would be that in the 11th district, we have the opportunity to pilot project this that would also include government land or government parking lots and facilities as well as anything else. And if we can find an area or two, then we have to go through the planning process too and all of those issues.
That's correct.
And then we would become a demonstration or a pilot project. I'm willing to start at that level if that is comfortable.
But I think one, one of the big issues, I think, that even though it would be in one area, that would be a citywide issue, would have to be what's the liability issue that the city carries with that?
That's absolutely correct. That would be part of a report that would come back from city staff once we've been directed by a vote of majority of the council to further refine this concept and, and report back. And so, liability would certainly be part of that discussion.
Yeah, and I think fair enough. But in this motion, I mean, what we hope will be an ordinance approved by my colleagues is the use of public, public land, public space. I don't want it to, to start with private because I can't get that done.
If that's, that's fine. If that's, if that's what this committee moves forward to council and that's what the council approves, then we'll report on, on a project that would operate that way and we'll explain what the challenges are in doing so.
Great. And what that basically does is give us options of dealing with the issue because the one option that you first suggested of just private sector parking lots, there aren't enough of that. I can tell you my district, I, I know it quite well. It's not the only way it can happen. And there are some public streets that would make sense possibly and there are obviously some city land that would. Of course, Mr. Parks is right about the liability and those, they'll have to be fleshed out and see how far.
If I, if I just made one quick interjection here. Amir Sadadi, Assistant General Manager, LA DOT. I think when Keith and the task force met, council member, that was one of the challenges with on-street and city facilities is, you know, we, we're trying to manage a parking situation and, and in reality, this is not a parking situation. It really, the word parking is kind of out of context here because you're living, you're sleeping, you know, you're, it's, it's not really a parking. So, and as Councilmember Parks mentioned, I, we, as a department that own so many off-street facilities, hear that same concern through the majority of the council members that currently have off-street parking facilities. So, I just wanted to come and say that that would be a challenge if we were to go forward on the large scale. A lot of the community, and actually, we closed the lots, we, we have, we're going to have challenges. So, we're happy to work with Keith and your office if you think some of the DOT lots. But as you know, we have challenges with your, with the lots, with the coastal commission, with having those lots available closer to the beach, having overnight monthly parking permits. There's so much demand for parking as is that it would be very difficult to, it won't be impossible, but I just wanted to alert this committee about, I understand the passion in trying to make that possibility a little bit larger by providing on-street, but, you know, we have overnight parking districts right now, we have oversized vehicle districts. So, we ourselves have gone a different route and, and I'm not sure how we can get to it, but it is important to consider those, the zoning, the safety, the liability, the lighting, the safety and health issues as well. So, it's not just the parking issue, it is all of these other interrelated issues.
Yeah, I want to be able to at least have the flexibility of moving in that direction with an ordinance that backs me up to do it. Those issues are real and that might preclude 90% of locations I've already been thinking about, you know? Because be it neighbors or be it zoning or as Mr. Parks said, it's, it's not, it's not like we welcome it.
Yeah.
Most people don't. But if we have the option at least to explore that, it gives me the challenge to see if I can find places. If, if we leave it the way it presently is, which is against the law to sleep in your car, which for God's sake, that's insane because it's only used as a tool to sometimes move people around, but we move them around from one neighborhood to the next and they're not resolved as an issue. Right now, in Venice, I got the St. Joseph Center doing an inventory of who's there, what their situations are, what potential wraparound services could be employed with these people, how do we transition them from their car camper to a Section 8 housing or something? All these are, are ideas that, that we're floating with and we're starting with the first thing, which is how big is the problem in my district? So, St. Joseph will help me with that. But inherent with me, we're trying to solve this problem, is the word criminalization and, and it's all right the way it is in terms of places you don't want these cars and campers to be. But if you find a location that you could work with, I want to be able to bring them out of the dark and put them in, in that location, be it public or private. Does that make sense?
It does.
You know, it's a policy issue, I know it's difficult.
Yes. Well, it, it's going to be difficult also if, if you designate linear street areas in terms of, you know, providing toilets, showers, and, and police services to make sure that it doesn't become a magnet for other negative activities.
I understand.
You know, one thing that may give us a little background, five years ago, Sheriff Baca recommended something similar to this. He was looking at downtown and I think some of this, all of these issues were discussed and whether there's going to be temporary showers and all that other. And I think they opted out of that because of a lot of the things we're talking about. And I think one of the things may be helpful too is that whatever created the ordinance about not sleeping in your car might be a good understanding of why that was created and what was the problem they were trying to solve. and what was the problem they were trying to solve.
Well, that's true, but we also have to keep in mind that not only do we have the example of Laguna Beach recently being sued by the ACLU and then settling, but the city of LA has been sued previously for just taking people off the sidewalks and arresting them, essentially for being homeless. And the federal courts have clearly told us, we can't do that. And so, we've...
Instead of locking the sidewalk.
Right. So, as you know, we've come up with a scheme that primarily is the way that street services interacts with the homeless downtown, to allow them to sleep there, but also to not create a nuisance for the business people who work there on a daily basis, and not create a trash problem for us.
But, just a question, I don't believe it's legal to sleep in a motor home in your own backyard.
No.
So, why would it be legal for you to sleep in a motor home on the street?
Why would it be?
I mean, if you can't even, I have a motor home, and I have it in my backyard, and every once in a while, we'll play camping and we'll go, go sleep in there just for...
Is it against the law for you to do that?
It's against the law. And, you know, I don't think anybody's going to come after you for doing it one night, as long as you're plugged in and all that, but, and the residence is being used for one family. I think the primary concern is that you're changing land use.
Yes, that's exactly right.
When you, when you have, for example, another family sleeping in the thing. But even if you were to sleep in your own motor home in the backyard, that's technically illegal. And so, I don't understand how you get to the rationale that you could make it legal on the street when you can't even do it in your own backyard. It's, so, it's a bigger issue. It affects other public policy in a way that may cause a deterioration in what we've, what we've defined as our quality of life. And it's something that, it's a discussion that we have to have, because it's out there, but we have to be very careful as how we proceed. That's why I suggest that we do it in micro-measure, as in the form of a pilot project, as opposed, you know, in other words, find a site and give it a try. And we can write the ordinance, but without a site, given the incredible diversity of land uses that we have, and how our citizenry interrelate with each other, it's impossible to craft an ordinance that is general, that could be applied in this very diverse city, without having some kind of experience to base it on, and to take into consideration the peculiarities of a particular site to allow for that. So, there may be a site in one district that is well-suited, it's buffered from the residential community, it's, you know, it can be secured, it can provide all those facilities, but there may not be another thing like it anywhere else in the city. And so, so, you know, I applaud, I applaud your philosophy, but pragmatically, it's a very difficult challenge, and again, I say that the best way to approach it would be to find a site, develop a pilot project around that site.
I'd like to move this ordinance to direct that, both including public and private properties, we allow for the creation of a pilot project in CD 11, and with the site to be identified in the future.
Can I suggest that you amend the motion along those lines, so that you move that city council, request the city attorney to prepare and present an amendment to the municipal code, Section 85.02, which is in the motion, for a pilot project in CD 11 modeled after Santa Barbara and Eugene initiatives to designate discreet and distinct areas where people would be allowed to park and sleep overnight, on public and private lands, including on-street parking.
That would be my motion.
Yeah, that's fine, that's, it's great. So, it allows me to go forward, it gives me an opportunity to decriminalize it if I can find spots and locations to do it, and it becomes part of a potential energy for the rest of the city to deal with.
And then the liability issues and other things will come back when the city attorney has the draft ordinance.
Yeah, now, we're not going to vote yet, we have a couple of public comment cards, but, yeah, or recalled or something like that. Okay, just coming to the side there, and let's, come on up Stephen Bach and Booker Pearson.
Mr. Chair, just for clarification, this item needs to go to Housing and Community Economic Development next, before it goes to council, so.
It does? When did that come about?
This motion, this motion, when it was introduced, was referred to...
Both committees?
Both committees, correct.
Okay, all right. Stephen?
Stephen Bach, I live in Hollywood, a neighborhood that has a great deal of homelessness and people living in their vehicles, in fact, right in front of where I live, and they just rotate from one side of the street to the other, the long and the short of it is, at the same time, I'm an advocate for permanent supportive housing facilities that we can't get built, so I hope this is the tip of a great dialogue on what we're going to do to confront a problem as opposed to ignore a problem. Just this past Monday, in my neighborhood, I watched the gateways, people come in and try to get approval for a supportive house, permanent supportive housing project, and the hoops they have to jump through are the same hoops they jump through in all 15 council districts. I've seen the same thing in Arlita, Sault Ste. Hanga, neighborhood councils around the city. Hollywood United was fractured over a supportive housing project. So, the same issues come up, the same accusations that it's going to be a magnet for insanity and poverty and trash and a blight on the... Ignoring the problem costs more in the long run and more in the immediate. It's, ignoring the problem allows for greater issues to arise, and so, I say this as someone who takes the metro, the red line of Hollywood and Western, and steps over people who are sleeping there. We just shuffle them from one side of the street to the other, and yet, we have empty lots up the wazoo in Hollywood, on Hollywood Boulevard, a street that around the world is famous. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Well, I appreciate your thoughtful comments, too. Booker Pearson?
My name is Booker Pearson, I'm the president of board of Upper Bound House, and I'm also the chair of the homeless committee for the Westchester Playa.
What is Upper Bound House?
Upper Bound House is a social service agency that moves families with children, homeless families with children into permanent housing, and we've moved over 650 children in the last 11 years. I urge you to support the amendment that Councilmember Coretts has just amended for a pilot. I think that, as Councilmember Parks very accurately just said a minute ago, these are homeless shelters without a building, and we have 10,000 homeless children in this, in LAUSD right now. Councilmember Rosendahl just gave an award to one of our graduates who was living in her car with her children. Most of the homeless families with minor children in this city are living in their car, and it is the biggest fear of their lives, that they will be molested, they have no place to park to safe. I know of several social service organizations on the west side that are breaking the law. They have, one man, very courageous man, has 10 families, 10 young mothers with small children, who come in there because he can lock that place. They leave in the morning, they have suits on, they take their kids to school, but they are living in deathly fear of being molested every night. The experience in Eugene, Oregon, if I could read you one thing they just published, very, very small city. Last year, the overnight parking program helped 30 families and 57 children, and that's what we do, Councilmember Parks. We would put an Upper Bound social service worker or another fine agency there, and it would not be a place to warehouse these people, it would be a place to immediately move them into permanent housing, because, and the Westchester Playa Neighborhood Council is focusing on families with children. In Venice, they have a different need, they have a lot of individuals who are living down close to the beach. We don't have that need there, and our council has identified a couple of areas that we, I believe, will recommend to Councilmember Rosendahl as a pilot project that we would try to take. And in Santa Barbara and Eugene, Councilmember Parks, they only use three to four cars or vehicles per lot, and they segregate it by demographics. You have one lot that's single women, you have one lot that's families with minor children. And if we don't get these minor children off the streets, they're four times more likely than regular children to be in the criminal justice system, four times more likely to be antisocial, four times more likely to visit the emergency room, they're 12 times more likely to be fostered children. 12% of all homeless children end up in foster care, 1% of regular children. If we don't do this, as a gentleman sitting next to me just said, if we don't do this, we're going to have a county and a city full of homeless kids that are antisocial, that are costing us not millions, but billions of dollars every year, because we can't cope with them. And I urge you to consider this for the humanity of it and the fact that it's physically responsible for the city. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments, and I'm a fan of his colleagues, he has done some amazing work, like he said, over 650 kids, but 1,000 people together, the parents and all, in different facilities that he has over the years created and worked on. We, the city of LA, participated in a 19-unit structure where we put in $400,000 of our citizens' money. Santa Monica put in $400,000, Beverly Hills put in $250,000, Culver City was the physical location, and they went through their issues with dealing with, and then LA County gave a million at least
Million and a half.
From both Xavier Aslowski's office and Yvonne Brethbert Burke at the time, or now Mark Bradley Thomas, about a million and a half. So, those monies came together, and that project is underway, which will take some homeless folks and give them families a place to be. So, it's good stuff what we're working on there. So, we have a motion, amended motion by Mr. Coretts. Do you have a second on that, Mr. Parks? Second, okay. And I guess we have to move it to the other committee first?
There's a possibility that Housing waived, but I will verify and I will notify your office.
Very good. And to our city attorney, there you are. What we want to make sure we understand when we get before the full council, is we will do a pilot in the 11th District. We're welcome to see that challenge, and we want to be able to have the options of location to include public locations as well. Not necessarily streets, if you're so strong in the streets, I don't know, though there are some streets where I think it would make sense, that aren't, they're industrial areas, not homeowners areas, that might make some value. So, I'd like you to make sure that part is in it for my district, otherwise, I'm going to have a hard time finding a spot.
Well, once council gives us direction, and I assume that it will be along the lines of this motion that you're passing here today, then staff will meet and figure out the obstacles, both legal obstacles and others, and report back, and hopefully with, we'll have some draft language for an ordinance that we do as a pilot project, and we'll take it from there.
Yeah, and the word project BNS on it, meaning more than one location.
Yes.
It's the idea of me finding locations that would decriminalize it, which would plug in social services and so on.
Right.
Okay, all right. So, moved and second, that ends that. Any public comment on any other issue? Thank you all for being here, sorry again, we were late, council went late.